Call the August tenth Hasslett Board of Education meeting to order. First of all, I'd like to announce that trustee Gardner is absent with notice as is superintendent Regan and filling for superintendent Regan is assistant superintendent Jean France. The first order of business tonight is to administer the oath of office to Jeff Stoney, who wasn't able to be here at our last meeting. So Jeff?
Yes, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I-
-and the Constitution of the state, of this state.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties as member of Hasslett Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, correspondence. Jeff?
Yes, we have a number of correspondence. First, I'd like to acknowledge and thank Mr. Gardner and Mr. Nelson for nominating for this position and the board for voting me to be secretary for the year. We have two pieces of correspondence. One is a thank you note that's a little belated on our part in terms of getting it acknowledged from Judy Connolly thanking us for the retirement reception and we'll know about how she's faring. And also, we have a letter from June Newutt asking us to consider the impact of the extracurricular activities in their time, how it affects weekends, particularly Sundays, and the way we conduct policy and so forth. I think everyone got a copy of that.
I think every board member got a copy of that letter.
We also had three or four letters which will be dealt with in the action items for tuition requests.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. This is a time in our agenda when members of the audience, if they would like to speak to the board on an issue or an item that isn't on the agenda, can do so. Seeing none, we'll move on to superintendent's report. Jean?
Thank you. The first thing I'd like to highlight for you is the attachment A for you. That is the Board of Education's goals and objectives for this year and a summary of how well we did. I won't go through this whole report, it's rather lengthy, but to just remind our audience that last year, the board set goals in six different areas: curriculum and instruction, technology, communication, our building construction program, our business practices, and the board's policy book. We've accomplished a lot in all of those areas and there is a report to tell you all about them and you've had a chance to read them. So I think we've done some very good things. Some of these, I suspect, you will see again in terms of continuation goal for next year. Secondly, as you well know, we've had to delay the start of our school year by one week. School will start for all students August 31st, which is a Monday. There's been a little confusion about the fact that it is just for high school. It is not just for high school, it is for all students. We are very pleased with the way construction is progressing, but it's not going as fast as we had hoped and so we believe that for the safety and a better start to the school year, it's better to just delay school by a year.
A week.
Excuse me, by a week. Oh dear, by a week. So all schools will start August 31st. Teachers will report August 27th and at that time, the teachers will be considering two options for how to make up the days. And it is, it is part of a negotiated contract and so they have the right to vote on, on how those days will be used. And we have come up with two different options and you've got a copy of those two options. Both options preserve vacations, for the most part. They preserve the winter vacation, the spring vacation, and the February four-day weekend. Those seem to be important as people have already made plans for going someplace. Some families have airplane tickets, et cetera. So both options do preserve those. The first option has us making up days during the year on a couple of Fridays that were to be no school days and on one day that was going to be a professional development day that instead will be school, that will be for school. That is the first option. The second option is to just tag the four days at the end of the school year. And once we know which option is favored, we will be sending a calendar to all families. And that should be the first week of school. We're really sorry for the inconvenience that it has caused some families, but fortunately, most people have been very supportive once they have found out what is going on and why we do need to make, make the change. And of course, all parents want their children to be in schools that are safe and orderly and we're hoping that this extra week will help with that. And so we'll, we're welcoming everybody on August 31st. Next, there is a governor's education summit. This is the fourth annual one, September 22nd. If you are interested in attending, please let Cheryl know or Bob know.
Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
And it's right here in Lansing, which makes it very convenient. The fifth thing on my list is that we do want to remind all of you that you're welcome and invited and encouraged to come on August 27th to the all-staff get-together at the high school that will start, well, the reception is eight o'clock and we will start our orientation at 8:30. We are excited this year. We have a speaker who happens to be a resident in our district, Dr. Cyrus Stewart, who did a lot, lot with our high school on diversity last year and they were very impressed with him. And of course, now we've seen the fruits of some of his labor in our diversity club. So we've invited him to be the speaker for the whole staff and so he will speak. The whole program will be done by 10:00 and you're certainly welcome and encouraged to come. I know Charlie's going to have a part of the act.
Yeah, I get to welcome the staff back.
That's right.
It'll be fun.
It's always a fun day and we give out the service pens and it's a nice day. And then, lastly, to remind you that we are going to, after the meeting today, walk through the Meridian High School and the high school. And so we hope to get out in a decent time so that we can have light to see.
In one addition, I think we're going to go over to the maintenance building.
Oh, we're going to the maintenance building too. Great. Okay. So that's my report.
Okay. Do I have any questions or anything? Okay, discussion items tonight. The first item is construction report. Dan?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Like you said, we're going to be doing a tour shortly after the meeting, so I won't touch too much on the high school or community education center. We'll kind of brief you on what's happening here. We have been working diligently on the student-occupied areas of our high school. We've been working roughly 50 to 80 people on any given day within that area, focusing all of our efforts on getting occupied spaces ready for the start of school. We will have our enclosure on our student commons area and special ed additions as well tomorrow. So those areas are progressing as we go along, as well the entrance doors at the media center will be installed. So some of that front area is going to start closing itself up a little bit. We expect pouring to begin in the administrative offices before the end of this week. We've set ourselves the deadline still of the 25th to be done with that area to give the teachers that week the time that they have a lot of work to do. The maintenance staff has a lot of work to do afterward. So we've keeping our deadline the same as it was. The teachers should permit a smoother change of it. The band room addition is progressing along as well. It's actually a little bit further than the administrative areas, so those will all be finishing up. It should be done on Sunday night or the 24th. At community education center, we're doing a lot of the same things, doing our finished work, getting ready for ceiling grid. It's going to start the first of next week. So we're kind of tying all those ends up together, getting done working overhead. As well, I'm sure you've noticed that we're working on the IFS on the exterior, getting totally, totally, getting us totally watered in the entire building. We recently started our parking lot and sidewalk work as well, so we're getting those wrapped up just in time for the start of school. Case work and our new sign is scheduled to arrive on Wednesday, so that should all be hooked up and running plenty of time for the start of school. As expected, the boot service equipment is going to be a late delivery, which may not be open for the start of school, but we'll do combinations as necessary. The middle school, unfortunately, that's been lacking some attention. We pretty much pulled every possible body we have, be it the high school, it's where it is. We are doing the ceilings in the middle school tomorrow. Case work arrived today and will begin on the floors by the end of this week. So within the next week, we can have, want to button that up so we don't have to draw the attention away for plus a million. Middle school's real anxious to get that, those areas back. At the elementary schools, most of our projects are wrapped up. Rowia, all the place surface areas are done. The windows have been replaced. We do have to put the asphalt path in, which is going to be cordoned in with the topping of the parking lot at the high school. At Murphy, all of our case work has been installed. The carpet's in. The ceiling grid is only lacking the ceiling tile. We ran into a little glitch with that and the wrong ceiling tiles delivered to the site, so we're getting that swapped out to make sure it matches all the other rooms. And at Woolshire, we're going to be installing the new playground equipment at that site this week. The roof replacement was done two weeks ago, so that gymnasium got re-roofed and that's getting through. And also by the end of the week, that soccer field is going to be level, so we can begin restoring that area before the start of school. It's likely we're going to fence the area off still so we can establish some of the sort of construction events out there during the school year. Other items on my list, I presented some good results to you and some items we recently received. Fit out for our re-carpeting the remaining classrooms at the high school, which is about 11 classrooms and five office side rooms. Also, did out boiler burner replacement at the high school, middle school, and a unit ventilator upgrade at the middle school. Do you have any questions regarding the over-hood or the results? These are all items we're going to be getting to ask parts in my work, not even before the start of school, but will be before the start of the heating season.
What's the plan on the carpet?
At the high school?
Yeah.
As it can't arrive before the start of school-
Okay.
-we're going to be doing it after hours, probably two months. There is a possibility it may arrive this weekend before the start of school, should that happen, and get as many done as we can. But the way things have been going, I'm going to say that's not a problem.
The old carpeting's been removed though, hasn't it?
Yes. Mike Duda's got to prepare all the removal and removal of the adhesive as well, so all rooms are ready for the carpet. Also, I believe you got a copy of the CM report in your packet and trying to get it reviewed. If you have any specific questions, you can answer them or we can deal with them.
Do I have any questions on the CM report? We continue to use our contingency. I mean, things come up, so it's coming down.
We had a couple of issues come up within the past two weeks, one involving the weight and fitness room gymnasium electrical features. Lots of sites with James and John Rowan and some special use things which may be added to the project, just some revocation of sweatshoes or monoders or outfits and such, to make sure the space is usable as, as needed.
Anybody have any questions for Dan? I have a couple. The, the parking lot, I, it's great to see some asphalt sitting there. What's the plan on the, on the final coat or topping? Wednesday?
It's going to be back Wednesday. They're in the top of the north lot and we'll have the striker come right in after and finish that up, lot altogether. We'll move all parking up to that lot so we can finish the rest of the other lot. The southwest lot is topped already and striped, so if we come over to the high school tonight, that's probably the best place to park, for ready and better conditions. And there, and void all the dirt.
Okay.
Yes, Jeff?
I just wanted to check on the status of the marquee. I know there were some things in the paperwork, in the paperwork. And our board package with the facilities committee and since I missed the last meeting, just thought I'd see what the status is of the marquee.
The marquee's been ordered and there is a chance it might be here before school starts.
Oh, great. Okay. Very good. Thanks. I noticed the other one was up and being used, I just didn't remember.
Right.
This has been any of the change, so, okay.
I got a question. The slope in the parking lot, is that purposeful? Was that put in there for drainage purposes or?
Yes, it was. Part of the, part of the addition we did was storm sewer sent to that lot. It used to be that the entire lot rained off towards the swamp area and we had to pick a height line to be there in order to maintain a slope off of the road and off the parking lot. Just kind of steep pitch in the parking lot as a result of getting the drains low enough to take the, the water off of the road.
Okay, but we're not going to have a big puddle in there?
No, no, it's, with that slope, the water should move quickly towards the drains.
Any chance of speed bumps or, or not?
I was wondering if I discussed that before you take that up further with Bob, you see that?
Well, I won't say which of my children made this comment, but they think the hill is very enticing and would love to see what it would do as far as a thrill hill. So I thought, immediately I thought, we better get some speed bumps in there.
That'd be brought up.
Make a slope?
You all set, Scott?
That's my question, yeah.
Okay.
That's all set.
Anything else for Dan? Dan, thank you. We'll see you in a little while. Okay, the next item is discussion on the high school, in-school suspension program and I'll turn it over to Jean.
Mike Duda and Gunnar Johnson are here. I think Mike is going to do the bulk of the presentation. We right now have an at-risk coordinator at the high school. It's a paraprofessional and we are suggesting that the money be allocated a little differently to use as an in-school suspension person. Most of the cost for the in-school suspension person would come out of at-risk funds and so we won't have the para-pro that we've had in the past, but the at-risk person will do many of the same things, or the in-school suspension program person will do many of the same things. And Mike is here to talk to you about what, what plans are, if it is on the agenda because we've actually done some interviewing and we have a person that we would like to hire. So Mike is, Mike, of course, has had experience with in-school suspension programs before he even got to Hasslett and then in school and has been successful.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, over this past summer, Mr. Johnson and Mr. King and myself have had an opportunity to take a look at some things at the high school and some areas that we felt maybe needed to be shored up. And so I am here this evening to talk a little bit about proposal of the in-school suspension. As Jean mentioned, our intention is to redefine the at-risk coordinator position. When I say in-school suspension coordinator, this person would be responsible for a lot of different areas and we're not looking at a person just to man a classroom with students that perhaps have had some difficulty during the course of the school day. Although that would be one of his assignments or her assignments to supervise that room, but there are days when that is not necessary. So our thinking is, is that this person can help supervise in different areas such as the hallways, parking lot, cafeteria, during assemblies, but also help out in some other areas as well. And one of the areas that we're looking very closely at at the high school right now is the area of attendance. And that person could help assist the attendance secretary in areas such as following up on attendance, students that have some absentee problems, following up with parent phone calls, to find out whether or not the excuses for why they're not coming to class are truly legitimate. Some other areas that we're looking at is to assist teachers in the classroom. And in the past, we've had at-risk coordinators go into the classroom and help either proctor exams, retest the students, or just help them with homework on an as-need basis. So when we talk about an in-school suspension coordinator, that is the way that we would like to post the position and have posted it. But more importantly, we want the, the role of this person to be more of an advocate for kids and not seen as a person that's purely punitive and a person that's going to be just manning an in-school suspension room. So, having said that, I'll take questions.
Is that Scott?
What affiliation would that employee have? With teacher's certificate, certification, union? What, what are we looking at here as far as?
Jean can answer that better than I.
It's a, it is a position in the para-pro unit. It's already there. We have-
Okay, so this is just an amplification of the existing?
We have, well, we have an in-school suspension person at the middle school and we have, all of our at-risk coordinators are in the same unit. So it is part of the paraprofessional.
I, I got the sense from listening to Mike that, that the days when there would be maybe more than one or more, however many kids might be in this program where they were suspended and they had to be there for however many hours a day, that there would be more than just lockdown or more than just sitting there doing, there would be some actual, apparently not instruction, but I guess I'm confused as-
The role of the in-school suspension coordinator, if a student has had difficulty where they're assigned to the in-school suspension room, it's an opportunity for them to come to school and still continue to get their work. The in-school suspension coordinator meets with the teachers and gets the assignments. If, if a student has difficulty with an assignment during the course of the day, the teacher's able to stop down during their prep period and meet with that student to give them clarification on the work that needs to be done. And so it's really an opportunity to keep kids in school and that's what the focus is, is to keep kids in school rather than saying, okay, you're going to be out of school tomorrow and you're going to be out on the street. Our intent is to keep kids in school. There are some things that we will not allow them to come to school, but for the, for the most part, kids should be allowed to come to school and get an education.
So it's not an instructional position?
No, it's not an instructional. That's correct.
You could use the instruction and the resource. Okay.
What we can do with it though is that if a student needs to make a test up or needs some help in a certain area, we could use that person to come down, the student come down to that room and take their test, it'd be supervised. There's students who maybe need a little bit of help once in a while, we could use it there. But again, like Mr. Duda said, it talks about mainly in-school suspension and dealing with those students who are in that room. But there are other uses that we can put that person to use it and so forth. So Scott, there's some of what you're talking about that can't, can't happen.
In the past, would you guess how many days would we have recouped as far as, from the, from the, not fair to Mike because he wasn't at the high school, but from, from your experience, let's say the last school year, how many days would kids have, rather than be on the street or at home or not being allowed to come to school because of, of the suspension, would they now be able to use this room? I mean, are we, how many? I'm trying to get a feel for how many days.
It's like a month or something.
How many, are we talking, one every day or five?
Again, we're going to use it in a different way than we've done in the past.
Right.
So when, when the students come back, it's not the same old thing that's going to happen in terms of attendance. There's going to be some, some teeth in terms of the attendance policy and what happens. So if kids are tardy and they're, and it's time, they can be going down to this room and, and so forth. So it's pretty hard for me to say three times a week or 22 times a week because I think there's a different flow here. Now, there are, there are a number of kids maybe who, who would have been suspended and Scott, it may-
Okay, I, I can't give you the number. I can't give you the number. Well, I guess I'm confused by the fact that I'm thinking in terms of in-school suspension and suspension for the entire day, whereas you are now telling me that it will be an hour?
No.
Or it could be, I mean, if it's chronically late for first hour or after lunch, the teacher says, you're, I mean, one more time and you're out of here, you go down for that hour. Is that-
In my experience, Scott, it's been a little bit of both. It could be for an entire day, it could be for three days, it could be for an hour, depending on the circumstances. And each circumstance is a little bit different. But the idea of having a person in that position is that you're going to provide some additional help to some of those kids that are at risk. And that's the intent behind it. We're not looking at this, at the middle school right now, we do have an in-school suspension person. I'm looking to broaden this position a little bit in that this person may be responsible for going in the classrooms and helping teachers out, whether that's, like I said, reading the test to a student that may be having difficulty or proctoring tests or just helping to supervise if the need be.
Right, I understand that, but I guess I'm getting confused in, in the title.
Okay.
That the in-school suspension leads me down the path of a trouble, a situation where there's trouble.
And I, I think what you'll find is that-
And what you're saying is there's going to be more to it than that.
As, as the year progresses, then that person will be more in that position than they will initially.
Once the kids get used to the program here, they're going to try and avoid it.
Well, I think that there's, as the year goes on, then you have some difficulties in classrooms where students just aren't making the grade and perhaps they drop out of the class and there isn't a place for that person to go. And so they end up in a situation where they don't have a class and it's, you know, they have no interest in going back to that class, so perhaps they'll be housed in an in-school suspension room only for that hour.
Right.
But the circumstances are different with each case and it depends.
Okay. One of the things too is that we found out over the past number of years is that a parent will say to us, isn't there another option for my, my child? I know that, Mr. Johnson, you don't want him in your, in your room, but to, to send him home for the day or for three days is not going to do him any good at all. Is there another way we can keep him at school? At this point, there isn't. Now, now there is.
This is not an alternative to expulsion, however. Is that correct?
Expulsion, no.
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 Okay.
Is there any systematic way of notifying parents? For example, could my kid be in the in-school suspension room and I have no clue or maybe a certain number of days kick in and then I find out or what's, what's the methodology?
I think that you find that if your, your student ends up in the in-school suspension room, you'll be notified by either myself or the S.
Automatically.
Yes.
Okay.
Much the same way that if, if a student ended up as an out-of-school suspended student, you'd be notified. So I don't see much of a difference there, although that now they have an opportunity to stay in school and get their work and stay on task.
Well, I know at the elementary level, they, for example, they can have a detention and, you know, maybe a month later, they tell me they had a detention.
Right.
And I, I think at the high school level, it's a little bit different. Parents probably need to know, you know, if their high schooler is, is misbehaving or not functioning very well.
Well, and that's, that's part of the responsibility as well that there'll be some kind of communication between home and the school with that, so.
Jeff?
This at-risk, we had an at-risk, we're using at-risk money and we apparently had an at-risk program. What, if anything, is being given up in exchange for this or is this an add-on?
Well, I think there's a trade-off here a little bit, Jeff, in, in that I think we're probably giving up some of the small groups, one-on-one, that just to deal maybe with math or with English or maybe that person in the classroom every day, say in Sharon Phelps's room, that risk coordinator would go in there and work with those students in alternative math and maybe in Mr. Beebe's class in, in Lit Comp 3, that we're every day giving some extra help there. I think we're giving that up. We're also having those students who need some help can come down to the in-school suspension room and, and work with our aide down there, Mr. Bartley, who, who need the help and who need to take that extra time to give that test. So there's, there's some individual work that can be done also, but, but I think that extra work in the classroom is, is being given up.
But those students who want it and want to go after it could get that assistance?
I believe they can, yes.
As opposed to having it come to them on a more regular basis? Okay.
Beth?
One question, or one question, one comment. One question is, do we, are we still going to have Saturday sessions?
No. This person will be responsible for having detentions after school, school from 2:30 to 3:30.
Ah, okay. All right.
And I, one of the problems that we looked at was the idea that there were so many days that went by before detention was served and the effectiveness of it just didn't have any meaning to it. So the idea that if you do get a detention, you'll serve it within a 24-hour period.
And the key is too, if you're in athletics or if you're in bands or if you're in choir- And the key is, too, if you're in athletics or if you're in band or if you're in choir and you have a detention, you have practice after school, you serve the detention before you go to those practices. And that's, that will be made very clear. So, if you're...
All the coaches and the...
Huge deterrent.
They will know that, absolutely.
Well, the comment on it is I'm thrilled to see it because I think if I was one of the kids who was having some real problems behaving myself at school, that the idea of spending a day or two at home watching TV while my folks were at work would really not be a huge deterrent for me not to do it next time. So, I think it's a great idea. I'm very happy to see it.
Any other questions?
Last question, we have facilities for it? I mean, I assume there's going to be a designated area or designated room?
Well, we've looked at a couple spots and right now, it's the former school store. But I don't know if you'll visit that facility tonight, but it's a nice, nice-sized classroom for what we have in mind.
Okay. So, you do have rooms that is being designated under the construction for it?
Yes.
I have one question. Help me understand once again the funding for this. Is this going to cost us additional?
Two-thirds of the money is, two-thirds of the money is coming from our at-risk state grant and the other third will be coming from general fund.
Okay. And that'll be reflected in our next budget amendment. Thank you, Dave.
State grant dries up. Is that an annual grant?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
It's based on our free lunch count.
Ah.
We get about $70,000 a year.
You spend enough of the things, too.
Yes, we do. All of the at-risk funding at the elementary school and we have programs at the middle school. So, we spread it out between almost all the buildings.
Any other questions? Okay, this is, this position is action item tonight. Does the board have any objections to that? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, Mr. Judah.
Thank you.
Good position. Okay, board reports. Finance and facilities, I'll make one last report. We met on August 23rd and finished our discussions on the marquee and that was the extent of our meeting.
May I add? Please. Now that I, now that you've designated chairman of the finance facility, yeah, quite my first report. I was asked by Bob in my conversation that, although we have not met since Charlie's meeting at his function, we would like to meet on the 26th. So, if Ron would make a note of this and I don't think Phil, we're not sure about Phil. I mean, we don't know where Phil is.
Does it have anything to do with the meeting?
Well, no, it's the fact that we don't know if he'll be in town on the 26th, so vacationing or disposing child at school or whatever he may be. That's certainly a busy week for that, so we suspect that he may not be in town that day. So, I would be asking that Charlie maybe want to be alerted to that.
26th?
Is it Wednesday?
What time?
Noon, lunch.
Where?
Sammy's.
Oh, I could've guessed that. I could've guessed that.
I didn't pick that. I didn't, I just wanted you to know I didn't pick that. Bob did.
Well, it's a little closer for me now.
And the agenda, and the agenda would be somewhere in the lines of an update on the budget, which is a normal activity of that committee. And we'll also be talking in terms of the discussion on the maintenance building that we're going to be visiting tonight. Those are going to be the two agenda items that we know of at the moment, so that you're aware of. That's the reason that we are taking a tour of the building tonight. I made the proposal for Dave today that although the committee was, first initially indicated that the committee should do that, since we're touring, I said, and we're looking for a time to do all this, it just seemed appropriate that why not the entire, on this issue, I think it would be appropriate for the entire board to see this. I've been on the board 13 years and never been there, so...
Well, now that we're...
This is the one behind Goff's, by the way.
Now that we're on the verge of getting rid of it, why are we interested in seeing it?
Well, to see whether or not, because it's, well, we'll see it. You're getting into the discussion of the committee now, but just so that we know what we're...
He's part of the committee.
Just so, just so that we all know what we are talking, I'm not sure all of us know what we're talking about. I know I certainly don't.
Seen it from afar for a number of years.
But that's all, as far as the size and condition of it and potential uses of it. So, that's the reason we're going to go visit that for a very short period of time, just to be able to see what, what in fact we're dealing with and may or may not get rid of. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Policy and Personnel Committee, former Policy and Personnel Committee.
To my knowledge, we have not met.
He hasn't.
Our last meeting, you weren't there. But Bev covered that, the last meeting.
Since that last meeting.
Since you and I were both gone.
It's not recorded in already.
Any items from the board?
Am I still going to make a do?
I'm going to announce committees. You know where you are. Any other items? Okay, I've got a few items.
We're going to start attending the financial facilities meetings.
They are good.
They have to get the policy booked up.
Okay, I want to make a, I have a few items. I want to make a special presentation and this presentation is to Ron Nelson. Ron Nelson has the Board of Public Schools, 1996, 1998 Board President, a gamble that you can have forever. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It'll give you some authority at home.
Absolutely.
Have to work if you can find a room to use it.
My own suspension.
Teach spot to respond to.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess the word's out on board committees, but let me make it official. Finance and Facilities Committee will be composed of Phil Gardner, Ron Nelson, and Scott McIntyre serving as chairman. Policy and Personnel Committee will include Bev Levy, Jeff Stoney, and Kathy Matteo serving as chairperson. So, those are our committees for next year and thanks to all of you.
We're thrilled.
Now, our next, just...
Time to get cracking.
I think we have one meeting.
This meeting's getting out of hand. You guys want a tour? On our next, our next, our next meeting is going to be a work session and we're going to talk about district goals. There's going to be a short presentation by somebody from the Chamber of Commerce about their career connections program, school-to-work type program that they want to share information with us on. And we want to talk about board goals and work sessions that we might want to have this coming year, so bring your list and we're going to work on it. And the meeting will not be televised, no.
How are we going to start it? Bring your hammer.
Would you like to start earlier? Then 7 o'clock?
6:30?
6:30 would be fine. 24th.
The date of that is sometime...
It's Monday.
Monday, the 24th.
24th.
Monday, the 24th.
I would prefer not.
You prefer not to start early?
But it wouldn't be the end of the world if everybody else wants to.
I don't care.
Whatever.
I'm not very partial to starting early. I don't either.
All right, the meeting will be at 7 o'clock. Okay.
If we don't tour, we're going to have to have dinner.
Somebody's birthday. Okay, that concludes my report. Action items, we have nine action items and the milk and bread beds were put on your table tonight and I guess we call that number I, if you wanted to label it.
Well, it's numbered.
Are there any, any items that anybody wants to pull? I'm going to, I'm going to pull number seven just to announce the names. Okay, do I have a motion for one?
So moved.
One through nine minus seven. Moved and seconded.
Going to go on it tomorrow.
Let me, let me read them. Approval minutes from July 13th, 1998, board meeting. Approval of the Carl D. Perkins Vocational Applied Technology Education Grant, which this year is for $115,000. And Maria, I believe, is that more than last year?
Yes.
Quite a bit?
Yes.
Last year, we were under $100,000, right?
Yes.
All right, so this is an excellent grant. Milk and bread beds, approval to offer girls' inter-scholastic golf that we discussed last time. Employee, approval of the employee retirement service credit purchase that we also discussed in the last meeting. The construction beds that Dan reviewed with us tonight. Tuition requests from a number of different students and tuition acceptance requests from a marine high school student that we had. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? 6-0, approval. Okay, number seven, I just wanted to read the names of the personnel recommendation. Mrs. Gigi Saunders will be part-time secretary for the ESL program. Mr. Kevin Toh will be a full-time math teacher at the high school, Michigan State grad. And Mr. Tom Bartley will be the in-school suspension coordinator that we discussed this evening. Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? 6-0, Cheryl. Okay, announcements, our next meeting will be August 24th at 7:00 PM. It will be a work session and will not be televised. Next item, adjournment.
Some move, second?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? 6-0, Cheryl. Okay.
As music educators, it's always unfortunate to show students many different musical styles. We're going from something that's American, to a march that's been around many, many years. You pull this thing off.
Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M. It will be a work session. It will not be televised. Next item. Adjournment.
So moved, seconded?
It's been moved and seconded, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-oh, Cheryl. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting will be August twenty-fourth at seven P.M.